First item on the agenda tonight, annual election of chairperson and vice chairperson.
I move that Jerry Modder serve as chairperson and Wayne Clark serve as a vice chairperson. Second, that's later.
Chair is in second. Is there any further? Any further additions? We gotta take a rule call on that or vice rule?
We'll take a rule call.
Okay, can we have a rule call, please, Patrick?
Wayne Clark?
Yes.
Karen Gale?
Hi.
Alderman Weygo?
Hi.
Alderman Haas?
Hi.
Jerry Modder?
Hi.
Motion passes unanimously.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That was a parade.
That was a big campaign.
Okay, next item on the agenda is this discussion regarding the proposed redevelopment by the three-leafed partners of the property at eighty-five thirty to fifty-six hundred West National Avenue. Patrick?
Mr. Chairman, tonight we're going to highlight a proposed redevelopment at eighty-five thirty, fifty-six West National Avenue. And there's a couple of resolution on tonight's agenda that after I go through a couple of slides, we'll have the developer present to make their formal request from the CDA. And then the resolutions relative to this will take up after closed session. So we can discuss the project a little bit in closed session and where we're at in terms of the outline of the development agreement and things like that. So at this point, if you looked at the property as it exists, everyone kind of recognizes it as the former Clark Oil Building. I'll pass this article along. It's from the Historical Society about Emory Thomas Clark and how he was an influence in our city. The building today is around thirty-nine, in the last report to the city assessors, around thirty-nine percent occupied. It probably has had levels exceeding that at certain points. It's three acres of land. The improvements are assessed around six-hundred eighty-six thousand. I mean, the land and the improvements at three-hundred fourteen thousand. So it's around a million dollars in value. The developer purchased the site for one-point-eight million dollars. So if you look at what this can do for the area, the concept here is that the site would be raised, the entire three acres. There are some environmental issues. It was the former Clark Oil site. So there's some petroleum and other things that, you know, with the building and its age that they're looking at. Clark Oil occupied the site for around eighty-six years. So outdated, it's an outdated office building. I mentioned the vacancy. And that's one of the things that also was mentioned in the National Avenue Corridor study. You might recall, we did that a few years ago, saying that there were some outdated commercial areas. I'll highlight some of those comments from that plan here in a little bit. But the proposed development is around a hundred forty thousand square feet, up to a six-story building with two-hundred forty-seven units of market rate apartments with two floors of parking. The overall construction budget's around sixty million dollars all in. And then the estimated equalized value when it's all done and complete is around forty-eight million dollars. So when we start at the current assessed rate into what would be gain, there's a significant growth here on this area. The floor plans or the units, you can see of the square feet on here, this is what's proposed right now in terms of the counts of units. You can see it gets up to three-bedroom, two-bedrooms, et cetera. And this is taken from the performer, from the developer. So I do have some architectural pictures there of the building. You can see the quality. It's modern. The first floor is higher in terms of construction so that we get that commercial feel, that broader window size along National Avenue. And then it equates to where the parking levels are as well in the building too. So you have this grander entrance into the building. So the entrance would be more on the western corner of the property. And then they'll have two entry points for parking within the building. On the place, the development, and I'm going to turn this over to David Lyons and John, three-leafed partners who are going to talk about the development. But it'll have an array of amenities. And if you go back to the housing study that we completed, I think it was in 2021, about the housing market in our city, amenities are key to the value of these apartment complexes. Making sure they have, you know, dog washing stations, dog walking areas, outside grills. You can kind of see the amenities that have been common in Element Eighty-four and also Sona developments where they're adding pools, grill stations, outdoor rooftop patios, outdoor lounges. The idea is to kind of have that hotel feel, but in an urban setting. So I'm going to turn it off with David Lyons, and you can talk a little bit about the project and their asks. And then we'll get into more about the TIF here following their presentation.
Good evening, everyone. I am David Lyons, the three-leafed partners, and really appreciate your time tonight. I'm joined tonight by my colleague, John Peckin, and also Simon Mann, who's the lead architect of our architectural team of Corb Architects and Associates out of Milwaukee. I do also want to mention, we have a joint venture partner on this, Ryan Douglas of Land Quest, also based in Wisconsin. So we're proud to have that company join us in this effort as well. I would really like to start out tonight by sharing that I really feel this is an amazing catalytic project for West Dallas. And that may seem odd to hear that, given there's so many successful projects here already and many others underway. But those projects primarily have been east of Eighty-Fifth Street. And we're really excited to be bringing a project of similar scale and prominence west of Eighty-Fifth Street. So we're really excited about that. In addition to that, as Patrick mentioned, this is the former site, Clark Oil, and the site is contaminated. And we're going to be remediating the site completely as part of our project. Interestingly enough, that's not a function of them having a gas station there. It was their corporate headquarters. It's really a function of how they heated the building way back when, oil heating. And all those pipes had burst and released contaminants into the soil. So we studied all that, and again, as part of our project, we're going to be cleaning that all up. And then the third thing, and really this speaks to why we're here tonight to make this request for TIF support. And that is the economic headwinds everyone is aware of right now. You know, we've got rising interest rates that we're grappling with. We've got high construction costs because of inflation. And really, we're before you tonight to talk about the TIF support to make this project possible. Without it, it just wouldn't be possible. So again, we're going to talk a little bit more about the project. We really appreciate your consideration on that front this evening. Patrick mentioned also that this building is largely vacant. It's actually thirty percent occupied by lease. But I can count on one hand how many tenants actually operate under that building. It's five or less. It has been a lot of out-of-state tenants that just had a storefront there. And so the churches that did occupy some of that space and relocated, they were given a lot of advance warning. And the prior owner, one of which was a broker, has helped us properly find them suitable space elsewhere. So with that, you might pause for a second, see if there's any questions about what I said. And if not, have John maybe add a little bit to the description of the building and our request.
Yeah, yeah, and I'll touch on, you know, David mentioned how this is going to be a catalytic project and all the activity that we've seen east of Eighty-fourth Street. Within the city's comprehensive plan, it calls for more retail along West National Avenue. When we initially met with Patrick and his team, they asked us, why isn't there retail programmed in this building? And really, you know, right now, in this environment, retail isn't, it's very tough to lease to retailers. And as a developer, we can't take the risk of building on spec. But we believe that this project will have a similar effect that Mandel's West Living and their Sona Loss project, as well as Ogden Company's Element Eighty-four have. And hopefully, we'll have, we'll see a similar amount of growth east of Eighty-fourth Street. This project is going to set itself apart from other developments in the area. We've worked closely with our design team to design a large range of unit plans, studios, one-bedrooms, two-bedrooms, and three-bedroom units. These floor plans will cater to a wide range of renter profiles. And then that coupled with the amenities that we have programmed will really set this community apart. To speak a little bit more on the amenities, we have two amenity decks. Those will include pools, a pool, cabanas, fire lounges, a large dog walk, and really spaces that will bring the community together and make it a more engaging community. Like many developers, we've been burdened by the interest rate environment, the inflationary environment that has put pressure on our operations and then on construction costs as well. What this results in is a large financial gap. In the last year, we've seen interest rates triple, if not quadruple. The main benchmark that lenders will go off of is SOFR, one-month SOFR. Last year, one-month SOFR was right around fifty basis points. Today, it sits at four-point-eight percent. So that obviously puts a ton of stress on the project's financials. We've been working very hard to come up with creative solutions, to find capital sources to help fill this gap. Initially, we were expecting there to be a need for upfront funding. And we worked with our partner, Land Quest, to identify a resource to eliminate the need for that, for the upfront funding. So today, we are requesting the creation of a twenty-seven-year TID. Based on the value of that TID, we're projecting that it can support approximately thirteen million, one-hundred-and-five-thousand, five-hundred dollars, if I want to be specific. And so we believe that if we're able to get your approval and the council's approval, that that would allow us to move forward with this project. With that, will open the floor to any questions?
I'll just add, I apologize, I just once cleared off in my intro. It's Eighty-fourth. I might have been saying Eighty-Fifth.
You keep saying Eighty-Fifth.
It's Eighty-fourth. It's Eighty-fourth. Yeah, so I apologize.
At least at East of Eighty-Fifth, which is good.
Mr. Chair? Go ahead, Alderman Weygo. Ballpark on the rents? I mean, we haven't talked timelines or anything, but I'm just curious.
I knew that question was going to be asked, so I had to write down on my little cheat sheet here. Yeah, so we have nine studio units, one-hundred-and-fifty-five one-bedrooms, seventy-three-twos, and ten three-bedroom units. Rents will range on the low end at twelve-hundred up to twelve-seventy-five for the three-bedroom units.
And what about the long?
Like twelve-hundred to twelve-seventy-five? That is-
Twelve-seventy-five for a three-bedroom?
Two-thousand, one-hundred and seventy-five. I wrote that down right, too. I just apparently can't read. Yeah, so-
That's why I'm aligned with what-
And just to add on that, we've been working with our valuation team at Tracy Cross and Associates to really pinpoint what rents would allow this project to be absorbed within, our target is fourteen months.
So you might recall when we started Six Points area, we were in the dollar forty-five, the dollar sixty range a few years ago. And today, when this comes online, which is around two years, right, or year and a half, it's two dollars and one cent. And, you know, the market continues to evolve, so.
Yeah, just to add on that, so I used to work for a company called J. Jeffers and Co. And I was, I can't remember the name of that historic building that you and I were looking at. It was like the-
The Kearney Trucker.
Kearney Trucker. And we got a market study done, and rents at that time were right around one-dollar-and-thirty-five cents a foot. So that was before the Mandel Group had developed the West Living. And so that was about four or five years ago. Within that time period, we've seen rents increase from one-thirty-five to, what we're underwriting to is approximately two dollars and five cents a foot. And so, you know, I understand that the goal is to ultimately have more high-impact developments where you can incorporate more affordable housing into these developments rather than just being a hundred percent market rate. Walatosa was in a similar position four or five years ago. Saw State Street Station come online, and the rents, and then more develops, follow, developments follow, and the rents are now at two dollars and twenty-five cents, if not higher. So although we don't have affordable units set aside in our unit mix, we think that long-term, having another catalytic development like the West Living, like Sona Loss, is going to continue that growth trend.
There's already enough affordable housing, housing in West Dallas.
Quality affordable housing is what we want to bring.
Karen, go ahead.
Patrick, back to the slide where you're showing the footprint of this facility. I think directly to the east there, I mean, that used to be, was that like part of the area?
Yes.
So who owns that?
It's a private individual. It's a psych, psychologist has an office there.
The drive-through.
The drive-through.
Drive-through site company. Her fence has become a drive-through too.
A few different drive-throughs.
Yeah, a few people have hit that fence, yeah.
I mean, it'd be nice to almost see that somehow incorporated, but, you know, I didn't realize that someone actually-
If we wanted a dream, say that's phase two.
When we just, you know, the boundary of the district is something that we can have in the next conversation. I've got some slides about that. And we did discuss a broader area as staff. But the issue being is, this is an MRO TIF, so the developer's performance is how they get the incentive on it. So if it doesn't hit the benchmarks, you know, that's a challenge to the developer. And so all the risk from the city is not there because you're not providing any upfront money. So the developer's at risk, but they have to borrow on that increment stream. So if we did a bigger area, the district, and you factor the whole economics of the district, if a property drops in value, then we become, we could be, see a decrease in the increment coming into the TIF, therefore impacting another project. So the broader area of a TIF, whether it's a redevelopment plan that we could look at, might be the way to do it. But the TIF right now is, you'll see, is limited to one person.
What other distress, maybe that's not the right word, what other underperforming large parcels in this area? Sunrise Apartments are doing okay, I think.
Right, and there is a unique, you know, if you looked at it from a redevelopment perspective in that area, you do see some, two single-family homes and some retail. And if you looked at the National Avenue study, the idea here is that there are spaces along National Avenue that are somewhat outdated, but they're outdated and not performing because some of the, some of them are not, you know, it's not like Flower Drone of Flame has moved in and bringing in a whole bunch of new people. It's somewhat, some of the storefronts are idle and stale. They're not refreshed. And you need people to do that, and you need population to drive commercial. And that's kind of what, you know, the sense of like, oh, you were just, we were just talking about the brewery, your shirt. And the Six Points is that now you have all these residents, and they like to go to what was traditionally called third spaces. When people work, live, and work at home now, they want to go to the second place. Because the third space is always work, home, and someplace cool to hang out in the neighborhood. Well, work and home is somewhat the same now. And then they want those places to go to, walking distance and et cetera. So there's an evolution that's discussed in the National Avenue plan to help support economic growth. And one of it is to take some of the older commercial redevelopment and get more housing in there that brings new life to the area, new residents that want those services and goods within the general walking area. So I'm sorry to interrupt, I don't know if you're done on all your points. But if you're going to look at a broader TIF, that would be something that we'd like to help spur additional development. Whether it's an affordable housing development or some other development. There are some outdated industrial uses adjacent to this. And I say outdated, I mean, they're still used as manufacturing, industrial uses, and repair. But by value and acreage, if you look at that and condition, they are aged. They are, they could probably, you know, eventually evolve in line with a comprehensive plan from the city as well in terms of planning and the land uses. Did that answer your question?
Yes, but, so you just talked on the walkability. What's happening with the chicane at Eighty-fourth and National? Because that's, that's like a stopper now for pedestrian traffic going east.
No, no, if everything could be great and we would have enough economic development in the area, redoing it in a second would probably be ideal. But, you know, the age of that railroad bridge, I understand goes back to the age of the Titanic. And, you know, just the amount of land used to get that right, or there's going to be different strategies on how to get that.
I haven't seen any new iterations on that. Has there been any progress on that?
We have not discussed the interchange as much. But one thing that we have discussed is, if you look at National Avenue going to the east, we have a bike lane and parking lanes. And in this area, there is this feel where everybody comes around that corner, and there's two lanes, it feels like. And then they fight each other to that one, whatever that spot is at some point. I've been there. I've seen it happen in front of me. And that's something that we're discussing as staff, to figure out how to manage that migration, traffic migration into that area a little bit better. Whether it's pedestrian improvements, line painting, adding a bike lane or a parking lane, I think all those are on the table.
Thank you. Any other questions? Patrick is going to the floor. Gentlemen? Thank you. So again, you just touched on the timeframe. When your instructor might start?
Yeah, so as Patrick mentioned, we purchased the property. I mentioned tenants. They've been given notice and will be completely vacated in terms of the building by the end of May. And shortly thereafter, immediately actually, we'll fence the property for security. Then we'll have June, July, and August, we're in full swing with the help of our architectural team and our engineering team to get to permits. But in that process, we'll be working, in those months, through August, we'll be working closely with the city to do everything that's necessary to even for a demolition permit, which is separate and apart from that. In conjunction with that, we're working with our environmental team to make sure we have a remediation plan. We're going to be doing all the reporting, even with the building, even before we touch the soil. So that demo could start late August, but certainly beginning of September. And that leads right into our permitting process. We're going to try to secure a footings and foundation, a partial permit, they call it, to get started, hopefully, beginning of September. I think, you know, so we'll be closing on our construction financing end of August to start, start beginning of September, and then it's a-
It's about eighteen-month build?
Yeah, eighteen-month build.
So it'd be tail end of, or I'd say Q, Q-one, twenty-twenty-five is when it would be delivered. Any other questions related to the process, the timing?
So if you were, you know, the discussion tonight is of a TIF district. And we do have two resolutions. One is to direct staff to prepare a TIF plan if, once we discuss the economics. And we do have some of that in closed session as well. Thank you, David and John. The other aspect of this is, you know, what is the boundary of the TIF? And here's our recommendation, and if we're going to start preparing, this is what we're looking at. And the reason why we would create a TIF. So here's the proposed boundary that encompasses the Clark Oil Building. You know, ideally, we thought about a broader area for the TIF district. But just looking at economics and what has to be put in to get the project completed, the value of the TIF is really being absorbed by the development, so. And why is a TIF being requested? John and David highlighted about this. But, you know, I just grabbed this from the Federal Reserve and how interest rates are going. And they continue to be in that higher level compared to where we were just over a year ago. I mean, it's, and this just kind of provides you a quick snapshot of that. The lending markets have tightened. We're seeing that everything from small businesses to our bigger projects in terms of who's out there and willing to lend. So the economics that, you know, causes a little bit more consideration when it comes to how we use TIF. Construction costs and materials, this is just, again, another chart from the Consumer Price Index on construction materials. You can kind of see how it continued to peak. It has come down some. But there still is supply chain issues out there in terms of wait times for materials. I just heard today, like fifty-two weeks for a generator. It can take some time to get materials and items that are needed to complete a building. In this case, we are talking about a pay-go TIF. So pretty much the city's risk for this is absorbed by the developer. There's no upfront money from the city. And the rents, you just heard the difference between West Alice and Walatosa, you heard two dollars and twenty-five cents. And we're starting to get into the two-dollar range in terms of West Alice. So that's a big difference from a few years ago that was highlighted. So we are seeing growth, but it still doesn't make up the difference between interest rates and the cost to build and delivering returns that investors and, you know, equity investors are looking for in terms of a project. So that's why TIF will be needed to complete the project. So the base value of a proposed TIF is about one-point-three million. I know our, this is what it would total out for the area. The budget administration over the TIF is seven-hundred-and-forty thousand. So when we do a TIF, we always take out money to do the TIF plan. And then each year, any type of staff time is then charged to that TIF. So over the life of the TIF, we put twenty-five thousand dollars a year set aside. And then the pay-go is paid to the developer. It would produce over a million dollars in increment in terms of the development. Again, twenty-seven years, so we are using the full statutory life of the TIF. There are ways that that can be shortened. I'll talk about that a little bit in closed session. Staff offered EPA loan at five-hundred thousand for one and a half. We have a three-point-five million dollar revolving loan fund grant from the EPA to use on development projects such like this old industrial sites, things that are contaminated. It still has, the project still has to prove that it's eligible, and they're working with their consultant to do that. But this is something that we offer to help bridge some of the gap on the project as well. I mentioned before the National Avenue Corridor study. Now, there's two aspects, the reduced amount of commercial space, but then also strengthen commercial spaces with new activity. So it kind of, it's like a yin and a yang in a way, in terms of you got to get rid of some to get better. And that's kind of what the National Avenue Corridor Plan said. It also said, you know, there's a lot of space that exists, and if other development can be put in, residential or live-work units, that's something that should be looked at. And then the study also talked about new amenities in the area. We have the park across the street. The West Alice Park and Recreation Plan highlighted improvements to the park, such as maybe a little dog walking area, you know, some other, where's some of the other improvements? Pathway connections.
Yeah, a lot of trail sidewalk improvements, dog park amenities.
So our recommendation is, we find this project to be transformative. It builds on the success of the Six Points and Eighty-fourth and Greenfield Developments. It's a significant investment. The project will have to raise between sixteen and eighteen million dollars worth of equity from a private investor and offer returns to that investor based on how the project performs. Again, in lines with the National Avenue Corridor Plan, we believe that, you know, this project in this area would help strengthen the National Avenue Corridor, bring more commercial activity. The pay-go TIF, so the developer must perform to receive the incentive. And if the TIF performs beyond expectations, as Alderman Weygo mentioned, you know, pedestrian improvements, park improvements are outlined, a potential bike lane on this so that we don't have that gap in that area. So we would look to put those in the TIF plan, even though there may not be funds for it. But if funds became available, this is what we could look at. If we don't use all the admin money, for example, that maybe those funds could be put into that type of aspect. I'll get into more of the economics of the deal in closed session. If you have any TIF, or questions on a proposed TIF for this area. Our recommendation is then that we hold item four and item five till after closed session.
Then you want to proceed with item six?
Yes, please.
The gentleman on his face, Paul, this, we appreciate your time for coming.
Thank you.
I can call you.
We appreciate it.
We're not chasing it away, but.
Mr. Chairman Carson, uh Crowfield, our economic development specialist, will present item six.
Item six, resolution approving the scope of service for Ramble Environment to provide quarter reporting assistance for the U.S. EPA brownfield assessment grant.
So um back in September, uh the city received funds from the EPA um to do some assisting with uh remediation um of various brownfield sites throughout the city. The city has worked with Ramble in the past um for doing uh semi-annual and annual reporting. And we're looking to partner with them again. In their scope of services, they're, they're projecting that the, the cost of this would be no more than thirty-seven thousand five hundred, as you can uh see on the screen. And this would be coming from um those funds, so this is not a, it's not a taxpayer funded expense.
Well, it's, it's a taxpayer funded, but not our taxpayers.
Right, right. Good point.
Well, it's, oh, okay, it's all federal tax.
They're just printing it.
They only figuratively print it, not literally, yeah.
It's pretend one.
Yeah.
Move approval.
Second.
Then move approval second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, resolution passes with ayes. Item seven, resolution approved, advice letter of intent and agreement with Baum Revision LLC for the property located sixty-seven seventy-one West National Avenue and sixty-seven hundred West Mitchell. Tax key number four, five, three, zero, five, six, four, zero, zero, three, and tax key number four, four, five, four, zero, two, five, one, dash, zero, zero, four. Patrick?
Um this one will be presented by Sean Miller.
Uh we've received several updates on this um over the past few years. Um excited to say that things continue to move forward on it with Baum Revision, who has a current uh letter of intent with the Community Development Authority to, with the intent to, you know, do a historic rehabilitation of the former Kearney Tracker Building uh located on the southeast corner of sixty-eighth and National, forty-one thousand square foot building. Um they've advanced the, the, the plans of the potential tenants. Uh there, uh we just received a pro forma a few days ago that, that is being analyzed by um the uh New Market Fire Group, um as they've asked for New Market Tax Credits along with historic tax credits as part of it. Um and uh we continue to work through the draft development agreement with them. Uh it's been reviewed, you know, currently by, by our city attorney and is backing their courts uh to respond to. So uh good, good progress on the project is uh the basic intent of this item is that they've requested additional ninety days to work through all of these items. One of the big items that they continue to move forward on is the submittal to the National Park Service, uh what they call a single issue review for the windows. Um it's like a forty-five page document, just pulled out some of the, you know, there's a number of things within it, but you know, there's just a number of challenges that go into the windows. Uh the windows are the biggest cost factor with the whole project, they're estimated at about three point five million of the like sixteen million dollar project. Um you know, this shows, you know, they have different window sizes, it's not one win, you know, for a window that they have to work with. Um the, one of the things they're proposing is that they, they would, although they would have to recreate these windows, and that's the big, really, the question in front of the National Park Service is, hey, can we take these old windows out? And we'll put in new windows that look just like them. National Park Service prefers that you restore whenever you can. And so their argument is we can't restore. They had, they've had uh window firms look at it, architects look at it, and then the other issue is structural. Uh it's given the length of the window walls, um that Pierce Engineering's analyzed and said, you know, uh you know, under current engineering standards, they wouldn't necessarily need them. It's, it's okay as it is, but it wouldn't, doesn't meet current standards. Uh and so what, what they propose, pitched to the National Park Service, say, we can't, although we can't restore these, we'll, you know, we'll make these look, this is one of many diagrams within the document, you know, make them look just like um as is. And in return, you know, what, what we will try to, what they will attempt to do is, you know, to restore the windows that are inside the building. There's a number of window walls that they can restore inside the building um so that you can see as you experience the building, you know, hey, this is what, you know. Uh it's just kind of a, an attempt to uh, you know, make the National Park Service uh satisfied with that the example of the windows that were on the outside are on the inside and will be able to be observed. They're give, it's given, uh they're basically have another week to review it. Um we saw some emails exchanged. Don't know what.
National Park Service has a week yet?
They have another week to review it, yep. It's, uh, it was put before them a little over, about a month ago.
We saw the emails from the Park Service that were shared with us, so we saw that they're changing things back and forth, so.
So we're, we're excited about the, to see what happens, but that, that is a key, the response that we get um on, on those, on that request. So we do have some, you know, I, we did receive a pro forma with some numbers and things like that, so we do have that, you know, available to talk about in closed session, but the, really, the request is just an additional ninety days to work through things. Happy to take any questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Clark.
Thank you. Why is the Park Service so fixated on the windows?
It's the new market, or the historic tax credits, and they require a every single thing that you do to the outside and inside of the building has to be approved by the National Park Service in order to access the historic tax. And so they, you know, they're, they kind of have the leverage of like, of if you want the money, you kind of, you know. The idea is restore anything you can restore. And, and so that's what they have, you know, they, they, they fight to have you.
As a Park Service representative, been here and seen what the condition this is in?
The National Park Service, I, I don't believe has, but certainly the Wisconsin Historical Society's architectural staff members have been here a few times to observe it. So they do work hand in hand with the Wisconsin Historical Society, so the hope is that they're passing that information along, along with the could, the developer pays a historic consultant um to work with the National Park Service. That, actually, one of the old Wisconsin Historic Society architects that was here now works for the consulting firm that developer.
She's been through the building, yeah, so, but early on.
So it, it's a good team doing it, it's um, we'll see what the response is, we'll know by next meeting.
It also may be a period of negotiation with the Park Service too. Like, they may say, well, we would like to see this preserved or this preserved. And you may, the developer may have to see a pattern of that. I, I don't, you know, it's, 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 it's how they get the historical preservation on the property that meets their standards of interior.
And, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Go ahead, I'll miss it, why?
And without the tax credits, the building might not survive.
You know, it may not survive, yeah. I mean, that's a huge equity gap, but maybe it gets used differently or something, I, I don't know.
Has the Park Service had any comment about the pigeons in the building?
Yeah, you're, they're protected or something.
I don't believe.
They need octaves.
They have not observed the pigeons, uh.
Which is a good thing.
Excuse me, but Mr. Neme has the floor.
Now, this building has been designated historical, right?
It's eligible to the National Register, it's been determined to be eligible to the National Register.
So it's, it's eligible, it hasn't been officially designated historical. I thought we were in the box that it is, it's an historical building now, and we're stuck with the outcome of this process.
No, we're, we're not stuck, um but we could access the funds.
We could tear it down if we wanted to?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
We already had bulldozers waiting a couple of years.
No, I, and I thought that's the decision we made a couple of years back was, we got ourselves stuck with having this building. Though, that's good news.
Any further questions?
I have one qu- uh quick question. Have they said anything about whether the windows have to be symmetrical or consistent with the color? I know they're kind of multi-colored.
So the, yeah, the multi-colored, those are obvious, those are infills for when windows broke and stuff like, and that's what the manufacturer, they, let's put this blue plastic up, or whatever color they had. And so it, when you're inside, it actually makes a really cool look.
I like that.
But I don't think that they'll.
You think it might just all be clear?
Most likely, I'm not, I don't, I'm not, yeah, I don't, it, it does look.
That would be another condition of how they, uh, they review as to what period of time.
Yeah, right.
That the condition, the restoration would be effective too. That's something that they would look at.
I, I think that's part of the charm.
They have sent us a company that would do the windows and their information, and we've looked through that. And actually, there's windows in that catalog that look just, not like rusty and things like that, but modern, meeting today's standards that look like this. So the firm they selected that, that represented the Park Service to do the windows really has quality work um in, in their, in their materials that. We should, we, we'll email that out this week to show you, because when I saw it, I was pretty impressed. Even with the movable, even like the look that there was a movable window in the middle.
So they would be, they would all be clear, you think, or frosted, or white, or?
I'm, I, I don't wanna, I'm not sure exactly, I'm guessing like kind of sep- like in between. Like, I doubt that they're just perfectly clear, I guessing there's, there's some. Uh it would be awfully bright in there if it was all, I think there's got to be some kind of.
Right, you'll need big curtains.
Be a greenhouse.
Mr. Chair, I'd move res- move approval of this resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, resolution passes. Item eight, discussion regarding eighty-fourth and Greenfield Avenue redevelopment element eighty-four. Patrick?
Miss, Mr. Chairman, most of this will be discussed in closed session, but I just, well, I just wanted to highlight that the space within element eighty-four, the commercial space is around um thirty-three hundred square feet. Now, the space looks great from the outside as we can see, but inside, it is unfinished. It's literally gravel and, you know, rough construction and brick walls. And that's not uncommon by developers, if you go into other areas of the metro area, what they do is they leave it unfinished because they don't know where the plumbing's gonna go. And the idea is that you get the tenants that would want to move in there, they might work out a deal and say, I'll put in X and then you put in X and you finish the space. Well, they were marketing the space for nineteen, nineteen fifty per square foot, which is above the market in, 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 in general lease rates compared to what's in that area. And I'm gonna talk about, a little bit about that, but there is um a boutique fitness studio that has interest in leasing um the space around seventeen ninety square feet. The idea is that maybe there's a small cafe, et cetera, that would go in uh on the corner. Now, with idea of, like, the idea here is we wanted to attract some sort of unique use, it's a TIF. We wanted that space to get finished, and we did say that we would consider some sort of economic assistance. And we're gonna talk about that in, in, in closed session. The here, the city is considering a CDBG loan um to help with the um, the, the fitness studio to go in there, purchase of the spinning bikes. Um it's a local resident that moved here from California. And they are um known, they work for Lifetime Fitness in the Midwest for a, a, a period of time as well too. So um as a number of followers, et cetera, but uh the idea here is um there is an economic ask of the city to finish the space, and we'll get into that in closed session.
All right, any further questions? If not, we'll go to item number nine, discussion relevant to Sona redevelopment within tax interim district, number fifteen. Patrick?
Um, Mr. Miller will um present this. Most of this, I believe, in closed session.
Yeah, uh, just briefly.
Oh, Sean, okay. Who's Mr. Miller?
I was formal. That's how we talked around that. Yeah, Sona, if you recall, Sona Lofts is a Mandel project across street from Farmers Market, sixty-sixth and National, one hundred ten uh market rate residential units. Um they are, uh, believe, uh, you know, fully leased at this point, being occupied.
It's fully, it's a hundred percent?
It, it, up to ninety-eight, you know.
As well as.
As well as things that are.
In terms of financing occupied, it has hit that goal.
Yep, so they've hit that mark of stabilization where they can go from construction financing to permanent financing. They've done it way ahead of schedule, which is great, uh because now they get, when they go to permanent, they get a lower uh interest rate. And then they typically can pull some funds out or.
The idea is to get off of construction financing and go to some permanent financing model.
And so they're there, and uh they've just, there's, they've run into a little bit of a, a hiccup with the Fannie Mae or Freddie Mac with the, the last year of MRO uh not being recognized uh by them. And so there's a, a proposal that we can talk about in closed session about how to make that work, where the city could benefit from it um and the developers as well.
No, I'm sorry. All right, we'll go to item number um nine, oh wait, excuse me, ten. Discussion on redevelopment of Ninety-second and Greenfield Avenue, former San Alwiches Church and School.
Uh so most of this will be discussed in closed session as well. We can go to closed session on this one.
All right, we'll hold that one for closed session, item number eleven. Communication, excuse me, communication of audit report for Beloit Road Senior Apartments LLC submitted by Baker Tilly US LLP. Patrick?
Submit, submit it to the CDA as part of our annual um submittal of the audit. One thing to note, it does show like a negative balance in the, on the operation of the, the property, but that's mainly an, a, um, a financial issue with the, how debt service is recognized, but we don't pay debt service on a city loan that we did to the property. So what it still recognizes debt service, that's in exchange for the property at the completion of the, the housing tax credits that we did on that property. So in, in, when fifteen years are up, we get that property, that's literally almost two years away. Might advise that we start considering marketing the property. You know, for just uh, um, I, I don't know what the long-term play is here, but I don't think that we want the property back here at the end of this, but we'd get it back and work to advance the sale of the property. Um I think that's, I think might be the economic strategy for it. But I'm formally submitting the audit to the CDA and, and the, and the, and my recommendation is that you would typically place it on file or accept and place on file.
Move to accept and place on file, item number.
Second, Chair. Did someone have a question?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's not. Oh, that's okay. Um, this is the one where we can still buy a, buy back for a dollar, correct?
For our debt, yeah, on the property, right. So it's essentially like a dollar.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor of accepting?
Aye.
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 It's a, accepted, thank you. Uh, item twelve, considers relative report on redevelopment initiatives.
I think we're on a roll to keep reporting here on the, on the one hundred sixteenth and Market Site. But we did complete the geotechnical, I don't remember if we mentioned that and the soils came back, um. I mean, there would be some soil manipulation that would need to be done or, or Pierce, but this map, I just wanted to show. Um I don't think many of you have seen it, but the, the turquoise area is technically like the floodplain. And the, the orangish hue that you can kind of see.
The line?
Yeah, right along the black line in this area, and I, we've talked about this. This is the, the existing wetland map. So there has to, what has to be done, and we're working with engineering, is some sort of wetland delineation uh, uh, on this. This is, I don't know if it's been surveyed, et cetera, but this is reported as wetland area. I know it's in Greenfield, one of the condos is actually in the wetland. Um I don't know how that was done, but things can uh occur in that area. And then um even our GPW facility is built technically in the wetland area. Hey, I don't know if you can see that, um but that has to get delineated. But we are starting to get interest from the development community about the site. I think um we have one um unsolicited letter of intent for the site, and then we have a, another group coming in.
Friday.
Friday, a, a known developer just expressing their interest in wanting to talk with us. Now, we have a timeline yet that we still have to work on in terms of what can happen here, and we also, also need to meet with the DNR yet. But we'll take inquiries and see what this looks like, and then we'll, it might help us pencil out the economics to see what it looks like here, and then when the city's ready to proceed, then we might have a clearer image. If somebody, you know, will look at how we want to market it at, 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 at future point, so. I just wanted to express that we are moving forward, I think we've come a, a pretty long way since the last couple of weeks, so.
Any questions? Okay, then I'll read the agenda for closed sessions. For items, items, Virginia, items three, seven, eight, nine, and ten. The committee may conceive in closed session for the purpose to provisions of section nineteen point eighty. The committee may conceive in closed session for the purpose to provisions of section nineteen point eighty-five slash one slash E for the state statutes for the purpose to delivering, investing public funds whenever competitive in our bargaining reason require a closed session. This committee can convene in open sessions after completion of the closed session to consider the balance of its agenda. Can I have a motion to go into closed session, please?
Second.
Then move to the second, and take real call, please, Patrick.
Wayne Clark.
Yes.
Karen Gale.
Aye.
Don Neimer.
Yes.